To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The city clerk please take role.
Karen Adams. Joseph Demont.
Here.
Karen Berry. Joyce J.
Here.
Tracy Langworthy.
Here.
Wanda Seng.
Here.
Mike Stites.
Here.
And Councilman Reinhardt is absent.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of May 9th, 2011?
Second.
We have a motion for approval by Councilmember Adams, seconded by Mr. Stites. Please poll the council.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. We have a proclamation tonight for Break for Bello. Would Mrs. Wheatridge please step forward? Karen Thaler.
Thank you, Mayor DiTulio, City Council, and citizens of Wheatridge. Good evening. Whereas coinciding with the traditional end of the school year, the summer months of June through August represent increased activity among children in neighborhood and surrounding streets, and whereas motor vehicle crashes are the leading cause of death for children two to 14 years of age, and whereas residential speeding is one of the single greatest complaints according to police departments and city council representatives throughout the United States, and whereas focused and alert drivers who adhere to the posted neighborhood speed limit make our streets inherently safer for pedestrians, bikers, and other drivers, and whereas it is our duty as concerned citizens and parents to educate children about the importance of practicing safety and awareness while playing in neighborhoods. Now therefore, the mayor and city council of the city of Wheatridge, Colorado hereby recognize the Break for Bella Summer Safe Neighborhood Driving Awareness Campaign, starting the last week of May through August 2011, done and resolved this 23rd day of May 2011.
Thank you. We were going to have an award presentation tonight for the Colfax Marathon Relay Team. We only have one person here tonight, so I think we're going to reschedule that for the next meeting. So sorry if you're here for that, but we only have one of the five, so I'd rather have everybody here. So we'll do it next time. Thank you for coming. And then the last, we had the Senior Resource Center. We had John and Kathleen.
Good evening, Mayor DiTulio, members of the city council. I'm John Zabava, President and CEO of the Senior Resource Center, and with me is Kathleen Stapleton, who is Chair of the Board of the Senior Resource Center. We are here to present the 2011 Elected Official of the Year Award to Mayor DiTulio. Now, what's this award all about? Last Thursday, May 19th, the Senior Resource Center, along with the Jefferson County Council on Aging, celebrated the 13th Annual Senior Heroes Award. You may not know, but May is Older Americans Month, so that is the month that we celebrate and recognize our older citizens. And with regards to the Senior Hero Awards, we recognized eight very special seniors who have made significant contributions in the community through a variety of volunteer work. In addition, we also recognize an Elect Official of the Year, which is a prestigious honor and one that is considered carefully. Criteria for selecting the award recipient includes, one, they are elected to a local, state, or national level of government, and two, representation of himself or herself as a leader in the development of significant and recent programs which benefit seniors or their families. Our 2011 Elect Official of the Year personifies this. Mayor DiTulio has helped seniors in many different ways. For one, he recognized the importance of transportation for seniors and helped to facilitate the Wheatridge Senior Circulator Bus, which is a fixed route that allows seniors to travel from their senior housing facilities to the grocery store, doctor's offices, and a variety of other stores. There again, transportation is really monumental to older adults being engaged in the community, having access to medical care, to be able to go to the Wheatridge Rec Center, and a variety of other places in the community. He also, along with city council, has supported Senior Resource Center's efforts to expand its day and respite facility to be built within the city. Mayor DiTulio's unwavering support has cleared the way for contributions from the city, which has helped our nonprofit move forward with the project. So it is with distinct pleasure that we present the 2011 Elect Official of the Year to Mayor DiTulio.
I'd like to thank John and Kathleen for this prestigious award. I also wanted to thank city council and Councilmember Langworthy. We started these projects a few years ago with council support. The Senior Circulator Bus, which council has funded through CDBG funding and the General Fund, and also the wavering of the permit fees as the Senior Resource Center gets completed. So it's been a team effort between the city of Wheatridge, the mayor's office, the city council, and also our staff, who's been working hard to make sure that your facility is open on time and on budget. So I appreciate this award. And the Senior Resource Center in the city of Wheatridge is really a jewel in the rough. We have a great team over there at the Senior Resource Center, supporting a lot of seniors. And as you've read in the local papers, and recently, that as the baby boomers grow older, they're going to be needing these services more than anybody. So our population, in general, is getting older. And the Senior Resource Center is on the leading edge, or sometimes the bleeding edge, if you want to call it, on programs and services to support our seniors. So thank you for the award, and thank you for being part of the city of Wheatridge. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is citizens' right to speak on any item not on the agenda. If you're here to speak on any item not on the agenda, please step forward to the podium and spell your last name for the record and your city. And it looks like we have a couple of people here, so please step forward.
Karen Thaler, T-H-A-L-E-R. I live in Wheatridge, District One. I just wanted to say thank you to the Wheatridge Police Department for putting on the Citizens Police Academy. I just got done with that. Our class graduated this past Wednesday. That's why I'm wearing the T-shirt in honor of that. Can't say enough about it. It was just phenomenal class, and it's open to residents of Wheatridge. And the next time it comes around, I highly recommend it for anyone to take it. Very fascinating. It was 12 weeks long, three hours a session, and just covered everything from head to toe with the police department. It was wonderful, and I encourage citizens to do that. In conjunction with also the Civic Academy, I did complete that one last fall. That comes around fall time. And again, citizens of Wheatridge, I encourage to take it. Very good. Awesome class. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is David Land. It's L-A-N-D. My address is 8730 West 34th Avenue in Wheatridge. And I'm just here today as a Wheatridge 2020 member, board member, and a participant in the stakeholder, 38th Street Stakeholder Meeting. There's a couple of you that have been attending as well, so I don't have to tell you about what's going on, but I'm here to just talk about kind of what's been happening and let everybody know that it's been going along really well. It's been well attended. We've got a real variety of folks at the meetings. There's some real common ground, I think, that's being found amongst all the different people that are interested in stakeholders in the project. I've gone through now two meetings. The third meeting is June 7th. We've got to the point where we've got vision statement guiding principles in place that I think everybody is beginning to embrace. Identified four cornerstones to really circle back to on every aspect of the project, and that's identity, vitality, appeal, and mobility. And I think all of those things are really important and are really being engaged very well right now. Following that, there's been a lot of talk about building business retention and improving circulation from a pedestrian and an auto standpoint along the corridor. And to that end, a lot of study about roadway design and different ways to calm traffic and get people to stop at the businesses along the way. So anyway, just wanted to give you that update. It's been a good experience so far. Thanks.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else on public comment on any item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda tonight? So the agenda will stand as published. Next item on the agenda is public hearings and ordinances on second reading. Council Bill 13-17- I'm sorry, Council Bill 17-2011. I'm going to open the public hearing. Councilmember Berry.
Yes, thank you. Council Bill 17, 2011, an ordinance amending Chapter 26 to support urban agriculture uses and activities. The city has witnessed increased interest in the topic of urban agriculture. The planning division staff received several inquiries related to urban agriculture, such as whether community gardens are allowed on vacant lots or backyards, and whether greenhouses would be allowed on the same lot as a business or restaurant. For most of these topics, the current zoning code contained little to no regulation. Due to the large interest in growing and selling produce in the city, the proposed ordinance would amend Chapter 26 to clarify what urban agricultural uses are allowed in various zone districts. The proposed ordinance establishes where three main uses, urban gardens, farmers markets, and produce stands are allowed, and includes minimal regulation for each use. In some communities, promoting urban agriculture dates back as far as the 1960s and 1970s, when community gardens first started to form cities, to form in cities like New York City and Philadelphia. In the past 10 years, however, the trend to produce and sell local food in urban communities has become even more prevalent. Urban and suburban communities are drawn to urban agriculture for a variety of reasons, including economic and community development, urban sustainability, or environmental sustainability, connecting urban dwellers, excuse me, to fresh, healthy food. In Wheatridge, a community founded on an agricultural past, there's renewed interest in how agriculture can be integrated into a largely built-out city. Many residents already have home gardens, and there's an existing community garden on a city-owned lot called Happiness Gardens. However, there's a demonstrated interest in residents, schools, and businesses to expand urban agricultural uses, including community gardens, yard sharing, community-supported agriculture, and roadside produce stands. The desire for Wheatridge residents to access these shared gardens, especially if they do not have room on their own lot, is demonstrated by the Healthy Food Assessment, completed by Live Well Wheatridge in 2010. The intent of the ordinance is to clarify where uses related to growing and selling produce are allowed in the city. Chapter 26 already contains fairly flexible provisions that allow residential homeowners to keep animals on their property as well as grow and sell produce from their home through a home occupation license. The primary amendments in the ordinance relate to urban gardens, farmers markets, and produce stands. Based on policy direction received from city council at a study session in December 2010, and from the Planning Commission at a study session in January 2011, the approach is to be quite permissive, allowing these uses in all zone districts. This is an overview of the proposed ordinance. The landscape definition is changed to include vegetable gardens and to clarify that areas planted as a garden qualifies a landscape area. Home regulations, the regulations pertaining to home occupations are revised to clarify that the sales of produce or other agricultural products made on-site are allowed to occur outdoors. This amendment is intended to allow homeowners to establish temporary produce stands on their property as a home occupation. Accessory building definitions, the definition of an accessory building has been modified to clarify that urban garden uses may have an accessory structure, such as a shed or greenhouse, even if there is not a primary structure on the lot. Urban gardens are defined as an area of land formally managed and organized and maintained by an individual group of individuals to grow and harvest crops and non-ornamental crops, such as flowers. Urban gardens may include community gardens, which plots are leased for a minimal cost to growers, and food is consumed or donated. Market gardens and community-supported agriculture, where people purchase shares of produce from a farm or garden. The proposed ordinance would allow farmers markets in any zone district as a primary or accessory use. Markets would not be allowed as an accessory use on residential properties with single or two-family homes as the primary use. The proposed language requires a submittal with parking and operational information to the Community Development Department. This middle may be part of a typical business license review process, since all markets are required to obtain a business license. Produce stands, the current zoning code allows for seasonal produce stands in agricultural zone districts only. The proposed amendments would allow temporary stands for up to six months per year in any zone districts. This means that homeowners with a home occupation could set up a stand, as could any business or urban garden in the city. Produce stands do not require a submittal to the Community Development Department, but staff would be able to review each stand as part of a business license review process. Produce stands would be subject to the following regulations. Produce sold, is produce or agricultural products sold at a stand must have been primarily grown, raised, or produced on the property where the stand is located. Seasonal operation stands may be set up for a maximum of six months per year and must be removed or stored when not in use. In residential zone districts, the hours of operation are restricted from 7:00 a.m. to sunset. Temporary off-street parking should be provided if there's not adequate on-street parking nearby. Signage stands that are home occupations would have to meet home occupation regulations, which allow up to two square feet of signage, plus one additional square footage for informational signs for parking. All other stands would be allowed one sign up to six square feet in size and five feet tall. Staff recommends approval of the ordinance, since it advances the city's goals, establishing a vision in Wheatridge to support urban agriculture and access to local foods. Specifically, under Policy Sustainable Future 4.2, a vision in Wheatridge recommends that the city revise its regulations to allow farmers markets, produce stands, and urban agriculture. The proposed ordinance would fulfill the strategy and help the city to implement its comprehensive plan. Adoption of the proposed ordinance would allow a variety of urban agricultural uses in Wheatridge and enable the community to pursue uses and activities, such as community gardens and farmers markets, which positively impact health, the environment, and community development.
Will the city clerk please assign an ordinance number?
Yes, Council Bill 17-2011 will be assigned ordinance number 1491.
Is there any staff presentation beyond the executive summary?
Good evening. My name is Sarah Scholwalter. I'm a planner, too, in the Community Development Department. I will probably go quickly through some of this presentation, because the content was just covered in the introduction. And I don't want to repeat too much, but there are a couple of topics that I'd like to hit on as part of the staff presentation. Generally, just the intent for this ordinance. I'll do a very, very quick review, because we already kind of covered what's really in the proposed ordinance. Talk about the process that staff used to draft this, and give the rationale for why we are proposing these amendments to the code. Just really quickly, urban agriculture is an emerging trend in the past decade in the planning and community development world. Cities throughout the U.S. have been amending their codes and also using government programs to really promote gardening and the selling of local food in their communities. And some of the reasons why is because it can add to community and economic development, revitalize neighborhoods, help with sustainability goals, provide health and food security for residents. In Wheatridge, we obviously have a great agricultural past, and we, because of that past largely, already have, compared to many other jurisdictions, pretty flexible regulations in terms of what you can do on your private residential property. That would include keeping of animals. Compared to a lot of other cities in the metro area, Wheatridge already has very lenient requirements for allowing you to keep chickens, bees, as well as large animals on your residential property. We also already have language in the code that would allow you to have a home garden, and beyond that, be able to actually sell produce from your home, as long as you have a home occupation business license. And the code does limit home occupation businesses to be conducted within a house or accessory structure, except for selling of produce. It already contains an exemption for that, allowing that to happen outdoors. So again, the current code is very permissive compared to a lot of jurisdictions, which would not allow selling produce from a home, and often have permitting requirements or just don't even allow animals on residential properties. So the purpose of the code amendments is not really to change any of those existing regulations, which again, are primarily in our residential zone districts for residential properties with the residential use. What the intent is, is to address some uses that actually aren't in the zoning code at all today, such as farmers markets. We do have a couple categories for temporary sales that is actually really geared more towards Christmas tree lots, is how it's referred to, when we're able to, when the Wheatridge Farmers Market wanted to come to Wheatridge, find a way to fit it under that category. But that Farmers Market coming to the city was one of the first times that staff realized we might need an amendment to the code, because there really wasn't a great use to fit them under in any of our zone districts in terms of a Farmers Market. We do have produce stands in the current code, but they're only allowed in agricultural districts. And then, community gardens, which is probably one of the uses that staff gets inquiries about most often, is not anywhere in the code. Neither is the concept of community-supported agriculture or CSA, where you might have a person or group growing vegetables and crops, and you can buy shares of those crops. We're kind of lumping together community gardens and CSAs and market gardens, where you're actually selling produce, under a category of urban gardens in the proposed ordinance. But right now, today, in our code, none of those uses appear. And staff has actually had more and more inquiries in the past few months, starting really a year ago, where we've had people specifically ask, would I be allowed to start a community garden at this property that might already have a school on it, or on this vacant lot? And based on our current zoning code, we haven't been able to give them an answer. We've learned, policy-wise, that city council is supportive of these uses, but the zoning code doesn't really reflect that. Another reason for this amendment is that our comp plan actually specifically calls for it. It recommends, under the section on Sustainability and Healthy Foods, calls for the city to revise regulations to allow farmers markets, produce stands, and urban agriculture. So we are trying to fulfill that recommendation in the comp plan. And I will probably skip through this part, because it was our, the content of what's in the proposed amendment was described during the introduction of the ordinance. I don't want to waste time repeating, but I'm happy to answer any questions on those regulations. In terms of the process that staff used to draft this ordinance, we started research about a year ago, looking at jurisdictions, both in the metro area. There are a few that have also been updating their codes to regulate these uses, but primarily looking at cities from across the country to get a real sense of the different approaches that jurisdictions are taking. We did have a study session with city council in December, and then a follow-up one in March, and then with Planning Commission, we had a study session in January. And a lot of what's before you was based on the feedback we received in those study sessions. Another really important aspect of the process that was used was the draft ordinance was reviewed by Members of the Access to Fresh Suits and Vegetables Task Force, which is a task force that Live Well Wheatridge started. And I attend regularly as a city staff representative, and there's a great group of citizens there who were, a smaller group, were really instrumental in reviewing the code and giving us some valuable feedback that helps shape what is before you tonight. So just close by saying, the rationale for these amendments are, as I mentioned earlier, does specifically advance a policy goal in our comprehensive plan, which called for revising our regulations to allow for these type of uses. We think it meets the needs of being able to clearly answer to Wheatridge residents and community members that are interested in pursuing these kinds of uses, to be able to clearly state where they are allowed. And we think that overall, it promotes urban agriculture, which can have a positive impact on the health, environment, community development of Wheatridge. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to public comment. Please step forward to the podium if you're here to speak on item number one, Council Bill 17-2001. Please spell your last name for the record, and state your address and/or your city. But please spell your last name for the record.
Good evening. My name is Ted Hyde. The last name is spelled H-E-Y-D. And I'm the planning consultant for Live Well Wheatridge. Good evening, members of council and Mayor DiTulio. I just first wanted to express thanks on behalf of Live Well Wheatridge to Sarah and her team, as she said, for allowing us to be a part of the review process, which was both very valuable for all members of the task force, and I think staff as well. So we very much appreciated that. On a larger note, wanted to express appreciation to staff, Planning Commission, as well as council, for getting to this point in the process of considering the code amendment. And on behalf of Live Well Wheatridge, I would very much like to express support for adoption of these proposed amendments. And it's very exciting to think, two, three, four years hence, how these intended regulatory changes will foster the production, the sale, and the consumption of locally grown healthy foods here in Wheatridge. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Jesse Hill, 2995 Chase Street, a citizen here in the city. Over the last year, I've had the wonderful opportunity also to work with this group, as we helped, I guess, reform some of the land use regulations there in place to support agriculture, the native use of Wheatridge, as I like to think. And I support this bill, but I would ask for one amendment. I would like to ask them to please look at removing the language that states that for produce stands, that produce sold there must be produced on-site. This would lead to many unintended consequences. And really, I haven't found much support out of the community itself at this point in having that part in the bill. Besides planning staff, it really hasn't been something the community has been looking for. It's also in direct conflict with the goals of the city, creating a least restrictive environment. When you put a restriction like that on a produce stand, saying you can't trade with anyone else, you can't, you know, offer more diverse stock selling out of a produce stand, that is very difficult to make happen. And we are talking about vegetables here. You know, the worst-case scenario is that, you know, if this isn't removed, that someone would be selling too many vegetables, and that too many people would be served, and that they would eventually maybe move to a larger location, because they have successfully served their neighbors. So if I can, please keep, you know, by keeping this in, it just restricts, I believe, it too much for a home produce stand. You know, some of you are small business owners. Imagine, in a small business, if you couldn't trade with anyone else, and you had to do all your economic activity by yourself. That would not be sustainable. Please have the courage to support citizens having the access to fresh fruits and vegetables, and not this particular overregulation. It shouldn't be, you know, illegal or a problem for being too productive and serving fresh fruits and vegetables to your neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you. Would you spell your last name for the record?
Hill, H-I-L-L.
Thank you.
Hi.
Hi, good evening. My name's John Lanterman. I'm here to speak in support of you approving this modification to the zoning. I-
Would you spell your last name for the record?
Oh, yeah, Lanterman, L-A-N-T-E-R-M-A-N. I live at 1965 Union Street, which is in the neighboring municipality, but I'm very, very close. And I'm involved in the Access to Fresh Fruits and Vegetables Task Force here. And I just want to speak in favor because through what I do, I'm on faculty at the University of Colorado and College of Architecture and Planning, and I have the opportunity to teach urban agriculture and some other subjects. So I get to see what's going on nationally with this. And there is so much going on, sitting up here, considering this tonight, you're not alone. As Sarah said, there's a lot that's been going on nationally for quite a while, and more and more municipalities are really looking at this. You're in a, in a great spot because you really don't have many things stopping it. But it's, I think this clarification and to further support this is, is, is to everybody's benefit. I mean, what urban ag does, especially at the scale we're talking about, which is fairly small scale, it really creates a sense of community. It can really enhance economic activity. And so I'm just, I really urge you to, to vote in favor of this tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Kim Calomino, C-A-L-O-M-I-N-O, 4070 Dover Street, here in Wheat Ridge. I'm pleased to speak to you again tonight on behalf of Wheat Ridge 2020, yet again supporting another action embraced by council, planning commission, and staff. This is yet another move towards our continued march down the road towards furthering our community as a vibrant and engaged community. And it certainly has, as has been noted, clear ties to our historical roots. As we look at the trends around the country in this area, and we listen to staff talk about how we are already sort of ahead of that curve, this is yet another exciting adventure for us. Wheat Ridge 2020 had an initial concept, what they worked with staff to test against this ordinance and found that it was successful. So we encourage you to embrace and adopt the ordinance. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Amanda Weaver.
Well, please step forward to the mic and spell your last name. Thank you.
Amanda Weaver, W-E-A-V-E-R. I am a farm owner and producer at 11100 West 38th Avenue, and I just came to speak in favor of this bill. I'm part of the Access to Fresh Fruits and Vegetables, and I just also wanted to thank everybody involved. My other hat is that I also teach urban agriculture through geography at University of Colorado at Denver, and I agree wholeheartedly with what John just said. So thank you all for being so forward-thinking on this. I did want to address the one thing about the onsite comment. Just in my research, I have found that if you don't have language around where things are produced, sometimes you have the problem of people buying produce from outside of your growing area. So that is one thing to think about in terms of why I do support the idea of, of the onsite fruits, fresh fruits and vegetables from Wheat Ridge. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Amy D. Pierre. That's D-E, capital P-I-E-R-R-E. And I'm at 4300 Reed Street. I'm before you to speak in favor of the urban agriculture zoning amendments. My husband and I actually are just starting a CSA this year, City Mouse Garden on Amanda's property. And so we are happy to see that it's being considered by the council and everybody who's been involved as well. I just wanted to mention that this does poised Wheat Ridge as being a municipal model for urban agriculture, not just for the Denver metro area, but potentially for the nation. So, thank you, and I support the amendment.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else here to speak under public comment for item one? Seeing none, we'll move on to council discussion and questions. Ms. Jay?
I do support the bulk of this ordinance. I do have an area that, that is concerning to me, which is the produce stands. And I don't think that was the intention when this was brought forward. Meaning, the area that, that I'm uncomfortable with is the daily operation of a produce stand on a residential property, if I'm reading this correctly. That, I think that that could be, you know, I love the fact that someone would be producing agriculture products for their own use or to give to their families, but the idea of a, of a stand open on a daily basis could be an annoyance or a difficulty for the residential neighbor who did not intend to have a business operation next to them on a daily basis. And I realize it's six months, but I'm wondering if perhaps that could be brought into a little bit more of a permit, as we do with garage sales, that sort of thing. I'm fearful that this is not intended as a home business on a daily basis.
Ms. Sane?
I too agree with the, the idea of urban gardens. I think it's wonderful for people to want to grow their own fruits and vegetables. And I, I have, I concur with my fellow council member here that we've done a lot of work trying to clean up the city of Wheat Ridge in the, in the time that I've been on council. And I feel that having produce stands out in front of people's houses is, is, would be more of a detriment to the visual effect of the street and could be irritating to surrounding neighbors. So I concur with this Jay on that, and would like to see some modification done there. Thank you.
Mr. Demott?
I, I do agree that urban garden is a good idea and gardens as a whole. I've seen them for a long time, and I honestly didn't realize that we had to have a permit or anything for them. I don't, we never did need one. So I just feel like there's some contradiction in this where one part of it says we have to grow everything, sell the bulk of what we sell has to be grown on the property, and then you flip to the next page and it says the bulk doesn't have to be grown, where you have a farmers market, you don't need to have it. I just feel like this is, it just has a, it just doesn't feel right to me. I just feel like it's more regulation, it's more infringement on property rights, and a use by right that used to be there doesn't seem like it's going to be there anymore. And it existed on these properties before, and I can't, I can't support this just because I just see too many contradictions going on.
Ms. Berry?
I think there, there's some confusion about what's currently allowed and what the ordinance does. And I was wondering if, maybe Sarah, you could clarify where farmers markets are currently allowed and what this ordinance would do.
Well, actually, in terms of farmers markets specifically, they're not allowed anywhere as a use by right today. They are not mentioned anywhere in the zoning code. We have a category that allows for temporary lots to be set up for selling items such as Christmas trees and, on commercially zoned properties. And so we kind of put the existing farmers market we have today under that category. We felt like it was close enough and made a note, okay, this is probably something we want to change in our code because generally we want to allow farmers market, let's add that as a list. So today, farmers markets are not a permitted use by right, and the ordinance would make them one in every zone district.
As far as produce stands, they're currently, and if I'm correct, they're currently only allowed in agricultural zone districts, but this would open that up to allow them in residential zone districts if you got a home occupation?
Somewhat, yes. The, it's definitely true that the term produce stand is only specifically mentioned under agricultural districts as an allowed use. However, the current home occupation regulations, first of all, they specifically state that you're allowed to sell produce from your home. And then, they also state that in general, home occupations need to be conducted indoors, but it specifically exempts the sale of produce from that restriction, allowing them outdoors. So by default, you know, if you're selling them outdoors at your home, it's probably going to be from some kind of stand. So even though it doesn't say produce stand today is allowed, it allows for the outdoor sales of produce. And so part of what this ordinance is trying to do is just go ahead and use that term produce stand. So it's essentially already allowed, we're just trying to clarify that if you're going to have that produce stand, it needs to be governed through a business license as a home occupation.
And, and you can, for your own private use, you can put any size, you know, basically urban, I mean, any size garden you want to. I mean, you can have your neighbors come work on your property. That's currently permitted, this doesn't change that, is that correct?
That is correct. And in fact, I wanted to address also a comment that was made earlier about how we're now starting to require permits, which with most of these uses, we're not doing. We're just saying that they're a permitted use and you're not required to get a permit. You are definitely not required to get a permit, in response to your direct question, to have your own garden on your home, in your residential property where your home is, to have neighbors come over and do what some people called yard sharing, where you let friends or neighbors use part of your yard. Essentially, the, in this ordinance, the only thing that would require not so much a permit, but a review by staff, is if you wanted to actually formally lease land on your residential property where there's already a single or two-family home. That is the only instance in which a permit or a fee of any sort would be required. We are requiring business licenses for home occupations, which is already standard in the code, and a business license for farmers markets. So you would have to obtain that, but no additional permit is required.
So, could you maybe explain, if you were going to try to put a produce stand on a residential property and you had to get a business license, what kinds of things would the city look at in issuing that building, or that business license?
Sure. Well, essentially, we'll be, we would contact the applicant and make them aware of the regulations for home occupations. We always give them a phone call, but then also mail them the actual restrictions, of which there are many, limiting the number of employees. You can only have essentially whoever lives there, and then up to one employee from off-site. Those restrictions on the size of the signage, you can only have a two-square-foot sign. For a produce stand in particular, we would be ensuring that they have a place to put it that's safe on the private property, that they're on a street that has some form of parking so that people are able to park either right in front of it or directly adjacent to the produce stand. And I'd make them aware also of the requirement that it's a temporary stand. So it must be taken down whenever it's not in use and can only be up for six months total out of the year.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments before I have to interject a few comments? Ms. Engwerly?
I have a couple, I have a couple questions. So, on the urban garden, does the produce sold there, I mean, for those that's, the market gardens that sell it, it has to be grown there as well? Is that similar to the produce stands, that they both have to, they only sell what they grow? Yeah. And the language is primarily grown, so it's, we're not imagining, you know, a situation where every single, especially if it's a value-added product, where you might have taken some fruit or something grown there. But it, in general, it would apply to any produce stand, even at the location of an urban garden. Okay. And, and then, if you have an urban garden that is on, on a lot that is, has a single-family home, do they have to have a homeowner occupation license as well, or is that just what was proposed in here, the $50 fee is a separate, it's not an addition to? That is, it's true, they still have to have a business license.
Any questions? Ms. Adams?
Sarah, you said that they would be able, my concern is parking. For instance, there's a couple places in the city that are around school areas that no parking is permitted from certain times to certain times. So those people would not be able to have a stand in front of their home if they had a garden, is that correct?
Essentially, yes. I mean, it's hard to know without knowing a specific case, but basically the language says that you have to demonstrate there's adequate parking. So if there's absolutely no street parking allowed, then it's hard to imagine that it would be allowed.
I guess my next question's a little bit to do with process in a site plan review and a special use permit. Explain those two different processes, please.
Sure. And actually, I'm glad you brought that up because one thing I failed to mention in my presentation was that originally, staff had proposed that urban gardens accessory to a single or two-family home would be subject to a special use permit, or an SUP, which is a category of use you'll see in several of our zone districts for uses that are thought to have maybe a little bit more of an impact, especially on adjacent properties than some of the other uses. So in commercial zone districts, for example, we might have, we have special uses for drive-throughs and sometimes for auto sales lots. So it doesn't mean the use is not allowed, but you have to go through a special use permit process in order to secure the use. And originally, staff had proposed that process for gardens, urban gardens accessory to single or two-family homes. With the, the thought behind that was that these kinds of uses could have pretty significant impacts, especially if you had a large number of people utilizing the urban garden on neighboring residential properties. And the special use permit was a way for staff to look for special criteria and kind of do an additional review. During our planning commission public hearing, we had some great testimony from people who are actually interested in doing those kinds of gardens on residential properties, who said that process seems a little burdensome, burdensome, especially because of the fees that are associated with it. And the fees can actually add up quite a bit because they really are geared more towards commercial uses, which is what most of our special uses are. So between a pre-application meeting with staff, which is $200, an application fee of $300, plus $300 per acre, and then if you went to public hearing, which is a possibility with an SUP, have even additional fees. Given feedback we got both from planning commission and from city council after the first reading of the ordinance, we really heard loud and clear, you know, our, the intent here is not to make a process that's too expensive or too lengthy for these kinds of gardens. Is there something else we could do that would be cheaper and more streamlined? So what's in the proposed ordinance tonight is the site plan review, which essentially allows for a little additional review from staff. We have the ability, we felt like it was necessary, to put the application on referral to utility agencies, for example. If there's, if it's a really significant urban garden, we might be looking at water. But essentially, it's a, the ability for staff to look at impacts on neighborhood, neighboring properties in these residential areas. And we are proposing a reduced fee of $50 total for the entire process.
So in anticipation of that, staff, when you said you would go to a referral process if staff in fact felt that it would have too much impact on a neighborhood, tell me how that would work.
Oh, that's more just if, the site plan review process, the way it's written in the code, does allow for a step in which after you've received a site plan app- the code, does allow for a step in which after you've received a site plan application, you can put it on referral. And I think, in most cases, we probably wouldn't need to, because what we would be looking at, we can just do really pretty quickly in-house. Oftentimes, our referrals go to utility districts or, and other city departments. So if there was something specific or unique about a use that we just felt like really needed that additional review, it would give us that opportunity to get the input of another agency or provider. But it would only be in situations where probably we're talking about a pretty significant size, or, you know, a really big change on a property, if staff felt that that was necessary.
So in essence, there could be six, seven, eight of these in a row along a street, and if it was a street that children were trying to go to and from school, then you would refer and ask the police department how that trafficking would go, and is that correct?
Right, and maybe, sometimes we refer directly to the school district. So, exactly, that's an example of when we might use that as part of the review.
Okay, thank you, that's all I have.
Thanks. Any other questions or comments? Mr. Steites?
Yeah, I love this. I guess, I guess if you're allowed to have chickens, you should be allowed to have squash and tomatoes. But I think this is great, we're promoting what they used to do years ago. And, and I think there's a need for it today. I would hope that, now, I do know that our work, we're having a tomato-growing contest this year, and I don't know who's going to win, well, or whatever, but I've been reading up on tomatoes, and I understand that if you play bok to them, they really produce, so I'm going to try bok this, this year and see. But hopefully, out of this, you know, we're trying to promote this, and hopefully, out of this, you know, it might spur some contests between neighbors or blocks or different things, and hopefully, maybe someday, I know at the Carnation Festival years and years ago, they used to have a, a contest on who had the biggest cucumber and tomato and stuff like that, and maybe we could promote that someday at the end of the season. I hope with this that we haven't made it too restrictive, because I think it's a great program, and we're trying to promote it, and we need to promote it with, in the least restrictive way.
Any other questions or comments?
I just wanted to refer something to council for consideration. When talking to staff, Ms. Adams, that, one of the things that was said was that the reason why this came forward was the fact that community members and businesses were calling in and wanted to have either an urban garden, or a farmer's market, or a produce stand, and those were not listed anywhere in our code. And so, the way the code is written, if you don't have it listed, it's not allowed. Therefore, if you notice in this ordinance, you'll see a chart, and it has the permitted uses in urban gardens and farmer's market, and the other was, produce stands has been added to the chart. So like, that's a good thing to allow those types of uses within the city, so it's clarity from the citizens and the staff that they can be done. The other thing was, is that we needed some clarification on definitions, what they were. So the definitions and the uses are good, having those permits in the process. The only location that I had the problem with, and I've asked council to look at this as an amendment tonight, it was that on page 26 of the text, there was F and G, which still brings the city involvement into this, and I think that based on the fact that neighbors should be working with neighbors, and this is a community effort, I would rather not have F and G within this ordinance, and my recommendation would be not to have F and G within the ordinance. And F says, it's the submittal to community development department, and then then G has urban gardens accessory to single or two-family homes. I think having those in there, first of all, if you eliminate one of them, it eliminates all the fees that was associated with this program. Two, it's less staff time, we don't need our staff to really be worried about the gardens. I think the neighbors should be able to work together and get that going, whether they're leasing or they're, they're doing their, their farming. It's, it's less bureaucracy, and I think that really you could address these problems that these are trying to address with the current codes, whether it's code enforcement or the police department, if there's traffic jams or issues, I think we should let those issues take place, and there may not be a problem in the future, and it's, it's less bureaucracy. And I would say, give it a year, pass it the way it is tonight, with these two changes, or maybe some other minor changes, and then give it a year or two and see how it goes, because I would hate to make it too restrictive, or have the city too involved in it, and at this point, it fails. So, that's my suggestion, is that, I support it 110 percent. You know, I, I really don't think that you're going to have, in, in the near future, six or seven produce stands lined up along J Street, or 35th Avenue, or Newland Street, and people are, you know, having this, this festival selling vegetables year-round. I mean, basically, you got a growing season, and you have a winter time in the city, so you're probably going to have some times where you're going to have some, some festivities going on, and maybe a block party, and they may be selling their, their fruits and vegetables. And then the other, other suggestion I was going to make, is I do agree with the comment about, that was made by Mr. Hill, that I think, try to make this as least restrictive as possible, and then maybe amend it a year or so when you see some of the problems, if they happen, you know, let that, let the market take its place a little bit, and let, let these farmers and the Wheatridge residents work with it a little bit. I understand the concerns that Councilmember Jay and Sang have, but I don't know if it's going to be an issue where you're going to have a free-for-all on any block, I hope, but I, I don't know, it's going to take some time for that to pan out, so, that's just my suggestions. Ms. Adams?
Um, yes, Mr. Mayor, my questions by no means meant that I was not going to support this, I simply was pointing out issues that I was considering. So, thank you for that, pointing out, but I absolutely am in favor of this, and was going to vote in favor of it. My questions simply were bringing forthright questions that I, and concerns that I wanted to bring up.
Oh, no, I was, I thought you were talking to somebody, I wanted you to, to really understand where the genesis of this became from, where our code is very unfriendly sometimes about what could be done, so. Communication's the best policy, right? So, any other questions or comments before I close the public hearing? Ms. Berry?
Um, in, in looking at this, I've been sitting on the task force and looking on this, and worked on like, as the agricultural guide to zoning in Wheat Ridge, and sat through sessions with the city of Seattle mayor, and Detroit, and Cincinnati, and a couple other cities that, that have been looking at these programs. And one of the things they did was, you know, talk about lessons learned. And in, in produce stands, one of the lessons was, if, if you don't have it locally grown on that stand, what ended up happening is you'd get truck farmers coming in on residential lots, and then, you know, somebody would rent them their, their frontage on their street, in their residential property, and they'd set up little stands. So you'd have, you know, the guys coming in with the chili cookers or things, and setting up on residential property. And, and I don't think that that's kind of what the intent of this is, and that would be pretty impactful, I think, to most residential communities. And, and so I think that's why that provision is in place here, and, and I support that for having it be basically locally grown, primarily locally grown. One of the other things was, is that community gardens can be impactful. And, and I sat through sessions of, and especially with Denver Urban Gardens, talking about siding a community garden, and essentially, what we're saying is that you could allow a, essentially, a community garden on a residential lot. And there are, there are issues involved with community gardens in terms of people parking in the right place, people coming in at all hours of the day, so it's, it's like running a business in, in a residential lot. And they came, and, so there are things that you need to look at, and things you need to, to regulate with that, so that you don't have impacts on the neighbors. And when they're, when they're siding community gardens, they go through and they evaluate all of this, and they come up with criteria about how it's going to be run, and, and they work with the neighborhood, and it's kind of a long process. And we're not suggesting, here we go through a long permitting process, but I do think that there need to be standards of, if you're going to put essentially a community garden in a residential lot, so that you're respective of the neighbors. I mean, I have a half-acre, I could, I could put in quite a few lots, and I could have 20 or 30 lots rented out to folks, and people coming to a couple times a day, and, and that would be pretty impactful to, in a residential neighborhood. So I think the criteria here is, is a good balance between the two, and I think staff really listen to both sides. So I, I do think that the site plan to look at the criteria is, is good, and I, I do support it.
Any other questions or comments before I close the public hearing? Ms. Jay?
The fact that the residential plots will be restricted to their own produce is of some comfort to me, because it won't be just anything that comes in, that one could feel that there's a measure of good health and safety with produce you would buy there. I would be very uncomfortable voting this down based on my first comments, because I so wholeheartedly support it, but I would like very much to, that if there is an abuse of the fact that residents could be selling produce, that we take note of it and stop the process if necessary, and allow other residents to feel comfortable with describing their indifference about this.
I'm going to close the public hearing, and a motion's in order?
I move to approve Council Bill 17-2001, an ordinance amending Chapter 26 to support urban agricultural uses and activities on second reading, and that it take effect 15 days after final publication.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Steites?
Yeah, I'd like to make two amendments, that the submittal requirement to the community development for urban gardens is removed, and that the site plan review process for urban gardens accessory to a single or two-family home is removed.
Is there a second? We have a motion to amend, based on the alternative amendments that I passed out at the pre-meeting, and also what's mentioned tonight. Discussion on the amendments? Please poll the council.
Motion carries four to three, with Councilmembers Barry, Adams, and Jay voting no.
Thank you. So we have a main motion as amended, with item F and G's deleted. Please poll the council on the main motion.
Just a minute. This makes me more comfortable with this ordinance, but I still have a problem with, with stands out in front of, in residential areas. I think of the possibility of the traffic, I think, in a neighborhood street, and I, I just don't think that, I don't have a problem with any other part of the ordinance, I think that, that it's a wonderful ordinance, I would like to be able to vote yes for it, but the problems I have is with the produce stands on residential streets.
We have a main motion as amended. Please poll the council.
And the motion carries five to two, with Councilmembers DeMott and Sang voting no.
Move on to item two, is Council Bill 18-2011. I'm going to open the public hearing. Councilmember Steites?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce Council Bill Number 18-2011, an ordinance adopting amendments to the 2006 International Building Code as previously adopted by reference concerning conveyance requirements and certain reference standards. The State of Colorado Division of Oil and Public Safety regulates conveyances elevators and prescribes their minimum safety and maintenance standards. From time to time, the state modifies the group of standards to which the conveyances within local jurisdiction must adhere. The current adopted state standards are not fully included in the standards adopted by reference in the 2006 International Building Code. An amendment to Section 3001.2 of Chapter 30 of the International Building Code that cross-references the current standards, standards adopted by the Division of Oil and Public Safety is necessary to comply with the minimum standards established by the state. This code amendment will not only assist, assist the city in complying with current, current state standards, but will by reference adopt any future standards adopted by the Division of Oil and Public Safety, keeping the city current with state requirements.
I thank you. Would the city clerk please assign an ordinance number?
Yes, Council Bill 18-2011 will be ordinance number 1492, 1492.
Thank you. Do we have any staff presentation beyond the executive summary? Do we have anybody here from the public to speak on item number two tonight? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, and a motion's in order?
I move to approve Council Bill Number 18-2011, an ordinance approving amendments to the 2006 International Building Code previously adopted by reference concerning conveyance requirements and certain reference standards on second reading, and that it take effect 15 days after final publication.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion for approval, item number two, seconded by Councilmember DeMott. Discussion? Please poll the council.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. Item three is Council Bill 19-2011. I'm going to open the public hearing. Councilmember Langworthy?
Thank you, Mayor. Council Bill Number 19-2011, an ordinance amending Section 15-4 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws to define landscaping for nuisance enforcement purposes. Whether or not to define landscaping in Chapter 15 concerning nuisances, nuisances to clarify that the city's officers may pursue nuisance abatement for dead and dying trees and other specific types of deteriorated landscaping.
Would the city clerk please assign an ordinance number?
Council Bill 19-2011 will be ordinance number 1493, 1493.
Thank you. Do we have any staff presentation on item number three? Okay. Do we have anybody here from the public to speak on item number three? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, and a motion's in order?
I move to approve Council Bill Number 19-2011, an ordinance amending Section 15-4 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws to define landscaping for nuisance enforcement purposes on second reading, and that it take effect 15 days after final publication.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion for approval is seconded by Councilmember Steites. Please poll the council.
Motion carries seven zero.
Uh, thank you. Item four is Council Bill 15-2011. The public hearing is already open. Mr. Steites?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, at this time, I'd like to continue the public hearing and have it convened on June 13th.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion to continue to June 13th, seconded by Councilmembers Jay and Langworthy. Please poll the council.
Motion carries seven zero.
Uh, thank you. The next item on the agenda is public hearings, and, uh, next item on the agenda is ordinance is on first reading. The purpose of first reading is to notify the public of the date and time of the public So we have, item five is Council Bill 20-2011. Councilmember Jay?
Council Bill Number 20-2011, an ordinance amending Chapter 5 of the Code of Laws of the City of Wheat Ridge concerning the regulation of hoop houses. The city has previously adopted the 2006 additions of the International Building Residential and Fire Codes. To complement the zoning changes, supported urban, supporting urban agriculture that were previously approved by city council, this ordinance would amend the appropriate sections of the adapted building residential and fire codes to allow for the regulation of hoop houses.
Motion's in order.
I move to approve Council Bill Number 20-2011, an ordinance amending Chapter 3 of the Code of Laws of the City of Wheat Ridge, concerning the regulation of hoop houses on first reading. Order it published, public hearing set for Monday, June 13th, 2011, at 7:00 p.m. in city council chambers.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion for approval is seconded by Councilmember Sang on first reading. Please poll the council.
Motion carries seven zero.
Uh, thank you. The next item on the agenda is decisions, resolutions, and motions. Item six is Resolution 13-2011. Councilmember DeMott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution Number 13-
Resolution Number 13-2011, a resolution approving a contract with the Urban Drainage and Flood Control District and the City of Arvada for the design right-of-way acquisition and construction of drainage and flood control improvements for the Ridge Road Tributary downstream of Ward Road, along with amending the fiscal year 2011 capital investment program budget, and in connection therewith, approval of a supplemental budget appropriation in the amount of $50,000. An intergovernmental agreement is required between the Urban Drainage and Flood Control District and the City of Arvada and the City of Wheat Ridge concerning the construction of storm draining facilities proposed to serve the Gold Lion commuter rail system. City council discussed the proposed drainage project at the April 18, 2011 study session, an IGA with RTD, which anticipated the proposed UD-FCD agreement was approved by the city council on April 25, 2011.
Motion's in order.
I move to approve Resolution Number 13-2011, a resolution approving a contract with the Urban Drainage and Flood Control District and the City of Arvada for the construction of the Ridge Road Tributary.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion for approval, seconded by Councilmember Langworthy. Discussion on the main motion? Please poll the council.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Item seven, Councilmember Barry?
Maybe in the future, you could let me know. Motion to award ITB 1106 Wadsworth Boulevard Multi-Use Trail Project to T&amp;M Construction, Sedalia, Colorado, in the amount of $324,113.90. The city was awarded a federally funded stimulus project in 2010 for instruction of multi-use trail on Wadsworth Boulevard, State Highway 121, from 26th Avenue to 32nd Avenue. The project will provide a 10-foot wide sidewalk for pedestrians and bicyclists. Bids were received and evaluated, and the apparent low bidder is T&amp;M Construction, Sedalia, Colorado, with a total bid amount of $324,113.90. Staff has evaluated qualifications, experience, references, and recommended award to T&amp;M Construction.
Motion's in order.
I move to award ITB 1106 Wadsworth Multi-Use Trail to T&amp;M Construction, Sedalia, Colorado, in the amount of $324,113.90, and approve a contingency amount of $64,823.
Is there a second?
I further move that the public director, the Director of Public Works be authorized to issue change orders up to a total amount, a total contract and contingency amount of[806.08][807.04]$388,936.90.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion for approval, seconded by Councilmember Jay. Discussion on the main motion? Ms. Barry?
This award and construction comes from a grant that we got from the Denver Regional Council of Governments, and this was a competitive grant, and staff did a great job of filling out the application and going through the process, and it was kind of a long and involved process, but it's a great project, and it's a great asset to the committee, and I want to thank, or to the community, and I want to thank staff for all their work in getting us this money to get this project done.
Thank you. So we have a motion for approval, seconded by Councilmember Jay. Please poll the council.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Item eight, Councilmember Stites? Just abbreviate the...
I always get the tongue tars. Motion to approve payment of Murray Dahl Kutschenmeister and Reynold LLP, April 2011 invoices for legal services in the amount of $21,048.27.
Is the motion in order? Motion's in order.
Here we go again. I move to approve the payment of April, of the April 2011 invoices for legal services in the amount of $21,048.27 payable to Murray Dahl Kutschenmeister and Reynold LLP.
Is there a second? We have a motion for approval, seconded by Councilmember Sang. Please poll the council.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Mr. Dahl, can you just have an acronym from now on for your business?
Just drop the last two names.
Item nine, Councilmember Langworthy?
Thank you. Motion to award RFB-11-21 for the purchase of a street sweeper to OJ Watson, Denver, Colorado, at a total cost of $157,300. Bids received for RFB-11-21 for the purchase of a street sweeper were opened on Wednesday, March 30th, 2011. Three bids were received. The apparent low, fully responsive bidder is OJ Watson of Denver, Colorado. Based upon compliance with bid specifications, staff recommends award to OJ Watson of Denver, Colorado. I guess I'd just like to add one little other mark, that the total approved budget amount for the cost of this vehicle, including the cost of transfer, purchase, and installation, and all other stuff, it was originally $250,500, so we're almost $100,000 less than that original bid. Is the motion in order?
Motion's in order.
I move to award RFB-11-21 street sweeper to OJ Watson of Denver, Colorado, for a total cost of $157,300.
Is there a second? Is there a second? Councilmember Jay, we have a motion for approval, seconded by Councilmember Jay. Sir, do you have something to say? Please step forward and state your case.
Good evening. It's Michael Kerr, K-E-R, with the Intermountain Sweeper, 3881 Parrish Street in Denver. We are here, unfortunately. We would like to direct your attention to the, obviously, the recommendation that you've read by the Streets Department to award the minimum bid specifications to a product that does not meet or nor exceed the specifications in RFB-11-21 as called for by the city's specifications. The City of Wheat Ridge Purchasing Department posted the RFB for Regenerative Air Street Sweeper and listed three acceptable manufacturers. Timco, which I represent, Alliance Sweepers, and Elgin Sweepers. We pulled some quotes from the documentation, and what has been handed out to you is the city specification. We've gone through, under the terms and conditions, and highlighted some of the key words as to which this award would be determined off of. Timco's an approved manufacturer and is called out as the minimum guideline. Equal must exceed or meet or exceed specifications. The evaluation and award would be the lowest, most responsive bidder, whose bid meets the requirements and criteria, and any deviations from the specifications must be clearly cited in writing by the bidder. A recommendation is being made for a product that was not listed as an approved manufacturer and does not meet the specifications as called for by the city. They have taken numerous exceptions to the specifications, and it's our belief that we can prove through their own literature that they have failed to take other exceptions and items that they do not meet, and that is part of what we've handed out to you. If you'll look through, just at a quick glance, pages six, seven, eight, nine, of the actual meat of the specifications, there's numerous specifications in which they do not meet. Part of the frustration with the bidding process in this was that per the specification of vendors, we're not allowed to make contact with the Requesting Department, the Streets Department, to help with this education process and to do our demonstration. Intermountain Sweeper Company is the only bidder that did comply with all the specifications in the RFP. This specification is the minimum, that is the standard. In a specification differences that was emailed to me from the Purchasing Department, this is the only documentation that we've received out of numerous requests from the Purchasing Department to give us. They only took eight exceptions. We note that there's over 19 that they did not take exception to, so I'm not sure if that's an inability to fully document their bid, or if it's a complete falsification of their bid. But we, unfortunately, we believe that we meet the specifications. If we could have the same opportunity to withdraw certain key aspects of the sweeper that are integrated, that help the longevity of the sweeper, that we too would also be low bidder, but that opportunity was not given to any of the other vendors. So therefore, we must formally protest the current recommendation based on the fact that the bidder was not an approved manufacturer as called for by the city. The bidder's inability to meet the minimum bid specification as called for by the city, and the failure of the bidder to address as part of their bid package all the exceptions where they do not meet the specifications. Intermountain Sweeper Company is the lowest responsive bidder who meets all the city's specification requirements, and as such should be awarded the bid. We thank you for your consideration of requiring all bidders to play by the same rules and the same specifications. Thank you.
Would you mind spelling your name and giving us your address again for the record?
Sure. It's Michael Kerr, K-E-R, at Intermountain Sweeper Company, 3881 Parrish Street in Denver, 80239.
Thank you. Have you given this information to staff beforehand?
Correct. Yes.
You have?
I'm sorry?
Have you given this information to our staff before this meeting tonight?
We met with purchasing several times and requested the opportunity to submit, and they said, per the specifications, clearly stated on Page 2, and also on, I believe, Page 4 of your specification, through Linda Trimble, that we are not to contact the Requesting Department.
All right, thank you. Your protest has been logged. Mr. Pronto, do you have anything to say before I turn it over to council again?
Yes, I would suggest that council defer action on this item, so that I can review this with our purchasing department and come back with a report to you later.
Okay, we had a motion for approval, and by unanimous consent, council can pull that main motion. So does anybody have a problem with pulling the main motion for approval right this time? Okay, then we need a motion to postpone this to a future city council meeting, June 13th?
The next meeting is fine, yeah.
June 13th?
I move to postpone. Till June 13th?
I second.
Okay, we have a motion to postpone award RFB-11-21 to the June 13 regular council meeting. It was seconded by Councilmember DeMott for a postponement. Please poll the council on the postponement.
And that carries seven to zero.
Thank you. That concludes our agenda for the evening. Move on to city managers' matters.
Nothing further this evening?
Thank you. City attorneys' matters?
Sorry to be late. The plane was late. There was a big thunderstorm somewhere, slowed us down, but glad to be here now.
Thank you.
Yeah.
City clerks' matters?
Nothing, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sang? Councilmember Jay?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Councilmember Langworthy?
I'm good. No, thank you.
Councilmember Stites?
Oh, yeah. One, congratulations to the mayor for getting his award tonight. I thought there for a while it was looking like he was getting one just for being an old guy, but it turned out to be different. With all the rain, I've watched a lot of weeds pop up. Please try to take care of your weeds. Now is a great time to relocate either your home or business to Wheat Ridge. If you need help, contact staff or one of us. Please try to do a positive thing, either for your family, your neighbors, and that relates back to the weeds. Help your neighbors. If they can't get out, help them pull their weeds, or cut down their weeds, or whatever you got to do, but just try to help people out. And as always, please try to find it and buy it in Wheat Ridge. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. Mr. DeMott?
Thank you. I just wanted to say I've received a lot of support and communication about Fruitdale Elementary and the Wheat Ridge Housing Authority. I just wanted to extend my, all of the phone calls, all the emails, all the good jobs and well wishes to include everybody on the Housing Authority. We have, you know, I've been with the Housing Authority two years, and I've been with the same group. They've, a lot of them, the members, board members, have been there a long, long time, and also to the staff that helped us, Ken Johnstone. Sally Payne is really our backbone, helps us 100% of the time and 100% of the way. Kathy Field is there with us every meeting, and our city attorney, Mr. Dahl, who went above and beyond when we had hundreds of questions full of flying around. It was sort of a hurry-up deal, and everybody really did more than was expected, and I want to thank everybody for helping get it done.
Thank you. Ms. Adams?
Thank you. I guess Memorial Day's coming up, and our Olinger Crown Hill Cemetery across the street has an entire weekend of activities going on, and I would encourage our citizens to be aware of what's going on with Memorial Day. On a side note, I think as we work through the process, we need to maybe be cautious. When questions are asked by counselors on the dais, it's simply to ask a question. It isn't necessarily to be corrected, or lobbied, or pointed out, and I feel that it's intimidating if the mayor directs a direct question to a counselor when the counselor's working through perhaps community concerns, and I feel a need to bring those concerns forward, and I don't feel comfortable with being pointed out or lobbied by the mayor on the dais. That's all. Thank you.
Yes. Last week, I attended the Denver Regional Council of Governments Area on Aging Committee, and it was a great meeting to attend. They went through all the various resources that are available to seniors throughout the community. There are quite a few resources, free resources actually, through the network of care, which will help you in determining your benefits that you're eligible for, or prescription assistance, or assisted living prescription, or assisted living recommendations. They also have resources that will help people fill out benefit applications for Medicare and other things, and I think it was great. And I don't know if most people know, but Wheat Ridge is, in the next 10 to 20 years, is going to have the highest percentage of folks over 70 in almost the entire metro area, if not the state. Jefferson County will have the highest, and Wheat Ridge and Arvada, and a few other communities in here will be having most of those folks. And I think it would be great if we could, as a council, have a representative from Dr. Cog on the area of aging come and give us a presentation about the various programs they have available to citizens, and in some way that we could help try to connect citizens to some of those programs. So I'd like to have a consensus that we ask Dr. Cog to come and give a presentation on the area on aging resources and the network of care, and they have a health check passport.
All in favor of that request? So the request is have Dr. Cog come make a statement on aging?
A study session and make a presentation on the resources for, on the area for aging committee.
Thank you. First of all, I wanted to thank the Senior Resource Center for their award tonight. It was unexpected, and I appreciate it. If you get a chance to go by 32nd and Chase and take a look at their investment in the City of Wheat Ridge, it's over $7 million of funding that has invested in the community. So get a chance, take a look. It's a great addition to the community. Wanted to also thank all of the COFAX Marathon runners. We'll have those folks in next meeting to give them their medals. We had four to five missing tonight, so we'll do that at the next regular meeting. And then I wanted to address Ms. Adams' comment. Yes, Ms. Adams, I know full well that no one is supposed to be lobbying on the dais, and I don't lobby on the dais. The concern I have is that every time I try to speak, the first thing you will do is normally turn away, start talking to somebody else, and not pay attention to my comments. And I feel that because I'm not a member of council, my opinion doesn't matter to you, and it really hasn't mattered the last six, seven years. So tonight, I felt that. I wanted to make a statement, a positive statement about this, and I wanted you to hear what I was having to say. hear what I was having to say, and that's why I asked you to listen for a change. We've had the same situation in several instances when people have come into the study session, they've tried to explain information, and there's a lot of distractions going on, and most recently, John Marriott with the Wheat Ridge Business District, he felt very attacked and victimized by your demeanor and your comments and your questions. So I think it has to go both ways, and I think we all have to be professional, and I'm doing my best to be professional at all times, and so I think that we can all work together to do that. So, thank you.